What? I don't like what? Even though I think I want some. I don't like.
Do you want to exercise?
Oh, I gave one of my.
I'll join us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Time for motion for the agenda. Salvo. I propose. We have two different presentations today. Is that correct?
Yes.
And first we will have the presentation for the art department.
Yes, we have the art department tonight, Greg. I don't know if you want to do the introduction or if you'd like me or Jen's going to do the introduction.
I would be happy to introduce Jen.
Great.
This is Jen Lo, she's a high school art teacher. And she and the rest of the department not only do a wonderful job with our students, but they have a wonderful presentation for us. It is even so. Jen, I'll let you introduce the rest of the students.
Thank you very much. This is John Brady, high school art teacher. Diane Fiesley. And our tech guy at the computer is Mike Edwards, also at the high school. Mary Ann Boils, who is sitting. Raise your hand, Mary Ann. And Sue Mayer is over there representing our elementary staff. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for giving us your time tonight. We're here because there have been many changes in the department. We're really evolving as a department. The world's changing, so we're changing with it. Our presentation tonight has to do with how we really develop creativity in our students. You'll see in front of you the definition of creativity, but more so than ever, creativity is a very important asset for our children to have when they enter the real world. There was a study done by IBM recently that, and they interviewed CEOs to find out what the most valuable quality was in a prospective employee, and creativity was the number one asset. In the art department, more so than developing creativity, we also benefit the whole student, the well-rounded student. Our goal is, when these kids leave, for them to be knowledgeable, for them to be critical thinkers, for them to be able to go out into the world and make contributions. A student who participates in four or more years of art at the high school level improves their SAT scores on the verbal section an average of 59 points, on the math section an average of 44 points. There are many ways that we develop creativity in our students in Hamburg. When a child enters kindergarten, they come with a natural sense of being creative, the ability to think creatively. And a recent study was done that shows that as these students move on from grade level to grade level, their ability to think creatively actually diminishes. So what we are working on as a whole is to get these kids to think in divergent ways. Middle school level, they work on many, many, many interesting projects to get the kids to try and come up with multiple solutions to our problems that are presented to them. And then once they get to the high school level, we can take that, those natural skills they've developed and have them take it a step further.
There's many different ways that we can develop creativity or help students to be more creative. Every class that we teach, we does all of these things that we're going to talk about, but what we wanted to do is to show you some examples, types of things that we do to help the young people become more creative. In photography, for example, which is the course that I teach, we, I encourage students to go out and start looking at the world a little bit differently. That's the beginning step, is becoming a more creative person. To go out and to explore the things that are around you, but to start looking at them from unusual points of view. We do, we start with a very interesting project for the kids in photography, which is based on the fundamental elements that artists use in making art. Go out and find them in the world and photograph them in an unexpected way. And if you stop and you think about it, a simple thing like that, to ask a young person to go out, look at things that exist all over the place, they see every single day, but photograph it in a way nobody's ever looked at it before. That's an interesting new idea right there. Stimulating their creativity and making them think a little bit differently.
I have to teach fiber jewelry design at the high school, and this is a lesson that I give to my kids in my classroom, where they have to choose an animal and they have to incorporate the physical and behavioral characteristics of that animal into a piece of jewelry. This really pushes the kids to take a lot of risks in their art. And taking risks really helps them come up with a lot of fantastic ideas. Drawing and painting, Michelle Syrick, who wanted to be here tonight, but had actually left her family. Her drawing and painting lessons, she really encourages the kids to explore their own ideas and to take them a step further in their drawing and painting, to experiment with a lot of different drawing and painting media.
Mr. Ray?
Ceramics is an entry-level art course that we offer at the high school. Most of my students have only taken exploratory at the middle school. And I like to look at it as kind of coming in the window or the back door. A lot of these students take the course because they're intimidated by drawing. So they get in there and they find out pretty quick that I make them draw too. But sculpting is just less of an abstraction than drawing. You're making something three-dimensional, it is three-dimensional. You're not trying to draw it on a plastic paper and make it look three-dimensional. What I do is I take classical art movements, like for example, the bubble pot, the gargoyles, over here to the right, surrealism, we talked about Salvador Dali and L'Acry. And right now in ceramics, one we're working in, pop art projects, where we enlarge food products and try to make them look as real as we can. And on the way over here, I was thinking about something from one of my teacher sessions when I was at college, a guy named Bob Burkhart, I don't think he's still around anymore, but he said relevancy is the most important thing. How can you make what you want to teach relevant to your kids? In a world where the average attention span is about one lap around a Super Mario track, it's a challenge. So what I do is I take these historical references and I try to have the kids break something of themselves into it. For example, the gargoyles are totally nothing like what you'd see on a medieval building or anything like that. They're more like what a student would want to put on his dresser in his bedroom. And the same with surrealism, it is a little more obvious than those projects than some of the other ones. And at the very bottom, that's Henry Moore, and we start with abstract figure sculpture. That's when you get that much higher learning level, that's ceramics, you do the upper level. That's it, pretty much, in a nutshell, the ceramics.
Graphic design is the course which I teach, and it's one of the courses that we currently have that gives its children or students an authentic experience. They actually design ads, logos, they're covered for the course offering book, so they're having the opportunity to take their art, take their design skills, and utilize them in a real-world situation where these are employable skills that they could go out and actually get a job in learning the technology, Adobe Photoshop, Adobe Illustrator, and programs that would really be employable in today's market, and they get to utilize them. The ad craft should be actually being published in the next few weeks. You'll see the students work where they actually publish an ad for a local business through the criteria of the local business that they set up for them. So they really have an authentic experience through the creative problem solving associated with that. We're also working on portfolio assessments, particularly at the advanced placement level, where the kids take everything that they've learned and create works in which they place them together in a comprehensive, cohesive portfolio, which they're also, in a sense, competing against each other because they take a look at each other's work and they use each other. It's motivation to try and do better. Well, he's doing this, well, maybe I can do this. And that really is the young age experience at the end of their art education before they go out into either the real world or college.
And these portfolios, our hope is that, these may not be students that are planning on going off to study art, but going off to study anything, what colleges are looking for, get creative thinkers, creative problem solvers, and these portfolios will be useful for them, to show colleges that they are, in fact, creative thinkers. So they're for all students regardless of what their future endeavors may be.
And independent workers too, because their portfolios are self-directed. Not one student in the entire room does the same assignment. They all have to be self-driven to come up with a portfolio that would express who they are personally the most. Which leads us to our next goal. I mentioned at the beginning that the world is changing at a rapid pace. Technology is changing at a rapid pace. A few years ago, who would have thought that we would have had the tablets out that we have now, or the programs that we have out now? So another goal of the art department is to begin to incorporate this technology into our rooms. So when our students do leave us, they've had solid experience with this, they know how to use the programs, and they can take it to another level when they get into school or into employment. So we've made some changes. We're developing some new courses. We're getting a college accreditation for other courses that we have. Want to give those to see yours? Actually, I want to speak first. Starting in about three weeks, I have a brand-new course through graphic design, which will be our first college readiness course. It's an ECC course, which the students will learn Adobe Illustrator, which is a very marketable curriculum that the students will actually put the audible to be employable from this course. But when they finish the class, they will have three credit hours from ECC if they so choose to do that. So it's very exciting. And then we have a few more in the wings that we're trying to work towards.
Yes, myself and Michelle Syrick have submitted our applications to GCC, along with our portfolios, our personal portfolios, our student portfolios and so forth, to change our photography and drawing and painting courses into college-level courses as well. So digital photography, black and white photography, drawing and painting would all earn three ECC student credits when the students finish with those programs. And again, making them employable in the areas of photography, employable in those areas as well as being able to take those on to the next level of college. Do you want to talk about fashion?
We're also developing, and we're going to be implementing, a fashion design and illustration course for next year. The work that will be produced in that course will allow the kids to enter a portfolio to FIT and will meet their requirements. And it is a course that is very closely tied to a career when they leave school.
Another course that is in the works that we're hoping to have in place in the next couple of years is a computer, a computer drawing and design course. As Jen said, technology is changing rapidly, and I don't think anybody sees that as much as artists and designers do. Twenty years ago, all of your designs for things were done by hand. Thirty years ago, the concept of doing anything on a computer was nonexistent. And now your designers are working with various softwares and pretty much in industry standards, they're working with computers now to do a lot of the basic designs that are out there. So we're in the process of putting together a program or a course that would introduce these students to a number of different software programs that are out there, including things like apps for iPads. There are some amazing apps that are being developed for iPads that you can sit down and design a house with. And this is the wave of the future. We're talking about tablets taking over. Well, this is what we're moving towards, to create a course that will introduce students to all of these different programs and things that are out there. Our goal for that class would be for them to start exploring creativity through the software and technology, in the area of working with concept designs, packaging designs, jewelry designs. Take a look at the bathtub down in the left-hand corner there. Pretty quiet, I want that one for my house. Concept product designs, concept architectural designs, automotive designs. Again, working in the area of creativity, but utilizing the new technology that's available to them and making them aware of what's out there.
We're just going to really quickly show you some examples of the current uses that we have in technology in our classrooms. Use of digital cameras, software such as Aperture and Photoshop. Most recently, we've been having a lot of fun with playing with the tablets. There've been a few department members who got them for Christmas. So bringing them in and experimenting with new applications. Even the smartphones, really pushing these kids, instead of using their technology just for social networking, that they can be working on really creative endeavors while they're sitting and waiting in the mall. And there's a lot of statistics, current encouraging statistics on careers related to the arts, that the outlook is very, very good. It's expected to increase by 13%. So there's a lot of careers that are related where the projected growth is very, very promising. So the old adage doesn't hold true anymore that if you want to go into the visual arts, that you have to be a starting artist.
We thank you. That was our State of the Union address.
Just have a student who wanted to read a brief statement about her experience in the art program, and we are unfinished. Thank you so much for your.
I also want to mention, in the text that we do, we often have a few articles that might be of interest to you after you've ordered where the art program is.
Could I just ask, is your program posted to your website, the PowerPoint you gave us tonight?
It is not, but it could be tomorrow.
Okay, we'll get that up there.
Okay, thank you. This is Mackenzie Hafner. She is an AP art student at Hamburg High School.
Hi, this is Melissa. My name's Mackenzie, and I'm a senior at Hamburg High School. I spend a lot of time in the art department, taking a lot of classes. As an AP student and the president of art society, I have chosen to write about the art department for one of my essays for my supplement to Brown University. The prompt said, "We all exist within communities or groups of various sizes, origins and purposes. Pick one and tell us why it is important to you and how it has shaped you." Like I said, I wrote about the art department. The upholstery are entrees splattered with paint, creates a perfect seat to relax and let my mind wander and thoughts about. The art department in which it is located is the community I exist within, or as an individual I can freely be. The work I've done and the friends I've made in the art wing have shown me that my alternative perspective and eclectic ideas are to be shared with others rather than silenced by conformity. The art department has also been a constructive environment in which my mind is creatively stimulated, letting me develop into a strong-minded individual. I like to communicate the elements of my mind, cannot verbalize through abstract presentation. The pulling references from my mind, I continuously reconsider my values and what intrigues me. I grew to love and develop my unconventional mind by working in an environment with a high capacity for creativity. The art department taught me to exist outside the expectations of others.
Board had any questions? Great, Jen, Mike, everyone, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. We're probably just moving out right away, so. I just, you know, as we do for every meeting, the building that we're having the board meeting at makes a presentation for us. So let's see, Bennett, principal of Armor Elementary School. If you'd like to introduce your team and your program tonight, we'd be happy to listen.
Thank you. Welcome, board of education members, and also members of the community. Welcome to Armor Elementary, a community of distinction. And I would like to recognize our distinct and distinguished staff who are here tonight, representing the full staff. And sorry, guys, but would you stand, please? Privilege to work with this group of professionals. As I said, our theme for this year, the 2011-2012 school year, is a community of distinction. During the first week of school, we met with all of the students in grade-level assemblies in the auditorium, and we talked with them about what it is to be a community of distinction. We define distinction as being unique and excellent. So a couple of days later, I came into the cafeteria while kids were having lunch, and I asked them, "Do you remember what distinct means?" And a hand shot up right away, fourth-grade boy. He said, "We are destined for greatness," which I think was way better than unique and excellent. But he really captured it, and that is what we strive to be every day. We would like to take a few minutes tonight to share with you some of our strengths that make us a community of distinction. These programs, collaborations, and strengths can be found in our school improvement plan on the Armor website. So I am going to start out with the first element, and that is collaboration. We are a school that collaborates as colleagues and also as members of the community. Our successes are a result of team effort. Whether it's Kenesha, SUNY Fredonia, whether it's local artists or agencies or experts, businesses, and other resources, we recognize that it is our collective strength that results in success for our students. It's not possible to overstate the importance of early intervention. And here at Armor, we strive to provide numerous opportunities for small group instruction in order to support the learning of all of our students. Kid Skills is one of our early intervention enrichment programs that provides the opportunity, once each week, for small group instruction targeting foundational skills necessary for learning. Through such classes as Art Smart, Library Club, Fitness Club, and Music Club, teachers have the ability to address the learning needs of their students in a small group setting. Armor has a longstanding tradition of academic excellence. In a kindergarten-through-fifth-grade effort, we are celebrating strong gains in both ELA and mathematics. We attribute this continued improvement to our collaboration, our early intervention, focus on the whole child, fitness, etiquette, character, and we focused on that last year in our presentation. Also, our new master schedule with 90 to 120-minute balanced literacy blocks and best practices in instruction. And we're just still kind of rattling in the fact that we had 46% of our fourth graders achieve the highest mathematic score of distinction, a level four. We had a 17% increase in our fifth-grade ELA, and we have had steady, strong progress in both ELA and math in third grade. I'm one of the members of the PTSA liaison committee, and we're just very thankful to have the active and supportive PTSA, as well as to offer our parents many opportunities to come into our classrooms, become involved with our activities, and just to enjoy the atmosphere that we create here at Armor.
CTE patrol gear helpers provide opportunities for fifth graders to willingly accept additional duties and responsibilities, model behavior, and provide service and leadership to our community.
I'm here to represent the support staff. The support staff throughout our building are important to the academic and personal developments and achievements of other students. Our support staff personnel are motivated by a sincere concern for the students and our educational necessity that benefits both students and staff.
The library media specialist is the best kept resource in town. Students will be in the library from kindergarten through college. The key to common core standards begins in the library. Students shown in the picture are a very popular reference source slash informational text, car racing. AES music students have the opportunity to rock in class with additional activities. Students can sing in chorus, learn how to play recorder, strings, or band instrument. Level four and five students can participate in musicals. Our gifted student artists participate in tablet, district, and community art exhibits. Please visit our hallway galleries after the meeting. In physical education and in intramuros, students in Armor are exposed to a wide variety of traditional sports and recreational lifetime activities such as bowling, dancing, and racket sports. Each year, Armor participates in the American Heart Association's Jump for Heart Associations, Jump for Heart Program. That encourages physical activity to combat heart disease. This year, Armor welcomed the master from Taekwondo School for a demonstration of Korean martial art with a huge number of participants. Finally, in June 2012, the 55th Annual Elementary Track Meet will be held for all fourth and fifth graders.
Choice time was a favorite activity of mine in kindergarten. Playing with the box and cars and dinosaurs was so much fun. Little did I know while all of this was going on, I was problem-solving, developing eye coordination. and coordination, discovering my creative talent, and expanding my physical and social worlds.
This year in first grade, we're incorporating the Daily Five in our balanced literacy instruction. The Daily Five is a research-based approach that allows us to differentiate our instruction across the entire grade level. The Daily Five promotes literacy independence, which is what we're striving for as the children get older, as well as fostering a love of reading and writing, which you can see a component in the slide, the word work portion of our Daily Five.
Our Erie and Bosse classroom offers a diverse and unique learning environment that promotes success in students through sensory, integration, motor, tactile, and language skills. Our goal is that all students become productive members of society. The student in the picture is writing letters in shaving cream and working on his sensory aids.
Second grade is a time of tremendous growth for children. Throughout the day, level-two students hone their literacy skills through writing workshop, differentiate reading instruction, and literacy workstations.
Hi, my name is Jeff Monoski, and I'm a level-three teacher here at Armour Elementary, and I'm here to talk to you about the Bulldog Boutique, which is our school store. We started the store two years ago, and it was a culminating project that the level-three team of Mr. Sparsino, Mrs. Sullivan, and myself put together to finish up a unit on economics. So we have one or two students from third grade running the store every day that it's open, and they're in charge of all aspects of it, from handling the money to stocking the shelves and keeping track of inventory. And all proceeds from the school store go towards funding our annual Armour Family Movie Night, which is held every three nights.
This year, the level-four teachers took a class together after school so they could better understand how to use a SMARTboard. They create lessons that are useful for us on the SMARTboard that make learning so much more fun.
Level-five would love to share another piece to our school puzzle. We are distinguished at level-five because we are daily writers. We start our writing period with a mini lesson that focuses on a specific writing strategy. Then we quietly tiptoe back to our seats and begin. We get to write for forty minutes every day. Tommy Blackwell will read his essay on bullying, and Kristen Backer will share her narrative piece of writing titled My Lacrosse Party. Please enjoy.
Boy is problem at many schools worldwide. In my opinion, the cause of this is the lack of discipline. I've come up with seven steps to help make boy or boy least do the right thing, and help end bullying. Step one, extra work. This can be as simple as scrubbing down the chalkboard, or it's just something as gross and disgusting as cleaning the gum off the cafeteria tables. The idea is to make, the idea of this is to make the boy not want to bully people again, or else we'll have to face the consequences of extra work. Step two, detention. You can make the time limit depending on what the boy did and how bad he or she hurt the child. As same as step one, the boy, this is to make the boy not want to hurt the child any longer. Step three, parents call. If the boy can handle step one and two, add that to punishment. I'll have grown up shelling him in two places. He might just feel unfun. Step four, take away privileges. The idea is this is to show the boy who is in charge, and you're not afraid to punish him more than you already have. So when you do those stuff, make sure you hit him where it hurts, because if he goes sports and doesn't rills, I take it away from him. Step five, humiliation. It may be mean, but it needs to be stopped. Idea is to make the boy feel like the child he has been bullying, bring us something really embarrassing from the entire class. Step six, suspension. It's like a mix of almost everything. You will humiliate the boy, at the same time, his parents will be mad at him. You took away the privileges of school and advantages. Step seven is to be expulsion. If all the other steps fail, get rid of the boy for no reason, or he's expulsion. If all the other steps fail, if he comes back for suspension, it's the little school and kids, that's where I'm triggered. And that's how I would end bullying. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristen Backer, and I'm going to read My Lacrosse Party. Woohoo, my parents scream when I scored. My last lacrosse game was ended. Hamburg Knights won the final game. After we won, my whole team drove to the Nike base for an end-of-season party. There, we played three-leg races, kickball, and even water balloons. Everyone got tired, resting, and drenched. Near the end of the party, we all got with our teams and said our goodbyes. My team got Hamburg Knights lacrosse t-shirts as our coaches' goodbyes. Then, when the party was over, I went to my car and told my parents how I broke my shoe in the second three-leg race. They were my favorite shoes. The color was bright orange. I wore them for my Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory musical I did last year. All right, Dana and Kristen, off we go in the car. I was so sad I had to leave all my friends. I was especially sad that I had to leave my best friend AJ. When I got in the car, I was waving goodbye to everyone. I will never forget that exciting, outstanding lacrosse year. I had fun, made new friends, now I'm heading home as my journey ends.
And I think I should point out that one year ago tonight, during our public speak part of the board meeting, we did have some parents asking for a writing program to be implemented, and here you see the results, so congratulations. And our student leaders, would you stand up and face the audience? I'm very proud, oh, I am very proud, Kristen, Ethan Pullman, Nick Haefner, Tommy Blackwell, Chelsea Reagan, Kristen Backer, Lexi Duma, I'm sorry, Lexi, and Christina Bird. Thank you very much. What we have attempted to do tonight is to put together the pieces of the mosaic we call a community of distinction.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bennett. Appreciate your time. Thank you staff and kids for coming this evening. That was very well done.
Thank you guys for coming. If you need to go do lots of writing tonight, you can go do it tonight. Anybody who wants to say something for this deck?
Who did get a card?
I don't know.
Next, I believe, we're going to have a discussion of information on the budget.
Yes.
Something we've been hearing a lot about.
Yes, you received, and this is more of a timeframe that Greg Davis put together, so Greg, if you would, please.
You have the annual budget of the board election, kind of the schedule according to the requirements by state. Just going to highlight a couple of dates. Monday, February twenty-seventh, the petition for those seeking a seat on the board will be available in our office, and then below that is the deadline for that process. Absentee ballots for the election will be available on March twenty-eighth, and we'll be mailing those out in early May. Budget adoption by the board, which we certainly started this process, is April seventeenth for their meeting, Tuesday night, April seventeenth. Our public hearing with the fellow high school auditorium will be on May first at seven fifteen, and the annual budget vote will be on Tuesday, May fifteenth, from seven AM till nine PM. Sure you'll all be there. Any questions about the decade rule?
Great. Thanks, Greg. Well, we're getting the budget presentation up and running. I'd just like to let the board know and let folks in the public audience know that a recent law was signed into effect on freedom of information, the freedom of information law, which is going to require school districts, municipalities to publish on their website information related to the board meeting prior to the board meeting. It does go into effect on February second. We have attempted to initiate that process, so when you go into our link on the school board meeting and the link to the agenda, you'll see highlighted in blue the attachments to the board meeting. So we've initiated that early, we'll continue to do that, and we'll have that up and ready, and we'll be ahead of the process by the time that starts. I believe it was just signed into law on January second. So we are doing that, and we'll be forward with it, and you can see that as a board and as public. We ready?
The hourglass is stuck.
Okay. Are you going to dance or anything?
Stuck was the key word.
Hey, somebody was eating all those chocolates and put the wrappers right here.
You didn't eat those.
Yeah, we can move on. How long is it? Do you know how long it's going to take?
Leslie, you need a new computer.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Why don't we move on, and then we'll come back to our.
Okay. We have discussion. Okay. Our next line is scheduled is public expression and information. We did not have anyone sign up to do public expression today, so we will move on to the information items for the board. Correspondents, people want to share?
Only correspondents at this time.
Meetings, workshops, and reservations. Tom, you mentioned that you might have, so I know you've been going to a lot of meetings.
I've been, the Erie County School Board Association, I'm part of the legislative committee, which has been extremely active. They seem particularly energized this year to try to get with our state legislators and senators to try to make some meaningful change to the mandates, to the pension system and so forth, to be able to give school districts the tools to stay within the property tax levy limit that they've now put us under. Our legislative breakfast is scheduled for February eleventh, which I don't know which two are already signed up to be there, but we do know that these two representatives, state representatives, will be there. The meeting I went to on Saturday was presented by Dr. Rick Tims, who's pretty much turned into his lifelong effort to try to bring equality to New York State schools, both through these mandate relief, as well as tax equity amongst the state. It was really pretty eye-opening when you look at how the tax levy limit affects school districts, such as those in Western New York, compared to those in some of the extremely wealthy areas of New York. So another part of his presentation was to point out these inequities, which, like I said, is eye-opening. There's the same percentage, see if I can say this right, the same percentage cut in aid to a wealthy district might end up a one percent, one and a half percent tax levy increase. To a more normal district, most districts in New York State, in Western New York, you could be looking at trying to replace that with a twenty to thirty percent tax levy increase. So what all of us have done is to try to combat that, reduce costs, our weakened staff programs, and his spiel is to try to get that reversed so that we're giving the education to all of you, so continue working on that.
Are there other people who have been at meetings lately that want to share with meetings that they went to, information for them, or committees? How about a super ducky? Give us a scoop as to what's going on in the high school.
There's actually a lot going on in the high school right now, more than people think. The musical is Bye My Birdie this year, and it's the third week, I believe, in February. Right now, I'm currently working with Frontier to try to get a competition to raise food for Food Day, attempting to do that in March, just to raise food and kind of have a clean competition between us and Frontier. The student government is in the works of retaining our high school cafeteria. It's a lot more work than I anticipated it to be, because we have to go through certain pain companies that are school-regulated. We have to get the ideas of sixty people in the student government to please everyone that uses our cafeteria, which is not only the students, but community members as well. So that, hopefully, our plans will head for a break if we can. We're adjusting to the new, having school during midterm week, and preparing for A-CLASS finals. First semester ends in about three weeks or so, and winter sports are started. Not doing as bad as we anticipated. We're actually doing pretty good.
Not doing as bad.
So basketball's improving a little bit. And then two fundraisers that we're doing at our school. One, Dr., they're trying to redo the Dog Pound, which is our school store. We sell food, we sell, now we sell competition notebooks, pencils, really anything you need during the day. They're doing that by, they have sweatshirts that they're selling for forty dollars, and links are on the website, and they're doing bags for twenty dollars, their Nike drawstring bags that you put on your bag. And then lastly, we, last meeting I talked about possibly getting a CD of Homecoming, and some man came in and videotaped the football game, the parade, the bonfire, the powder cup game, pretty much everything that went on that entire week. And we came to an agreement that you'd sell for eight dollars, you'd get four, we'd get four, and then there would be ten. We split that the same. There's a mini clip, Mr. Kind of tells me on the website, and with the order form for that, too. So, it's pretty much it.
Was there not a winner of Homecoming this year?
There is, it's in February.
Oh, it's in February?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I'm sure it's in February.
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't know if it had already passed.
No, no.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we ready?
Ready, sir?
Great. And this is, Armour's going to give an update on the budget process we're going through.
Not doing as bad as we anticipated. We're actually doing pretty good.
Not doing as bad as you anticipated.
So that's all's grooming, actually, a little bit. And then two fundraisers that we're doing at our school. One, Dr. They're trying to redo the Dog Pound, which is our school store. We sell food, we sell, now we sell competition books, pencils, really anything you need during the day. They're doing that by, they have sweatshirts that they're selling for $40 and links are on the website. And they're doing bags for $20, they're Nike drawstring bags that you put on your back. And then lastly, we, last meeting I talked about possibly getting a CD of Homecoming, and some man came in and videotaped the football game, the parade, the bonfire, the powder puff game, pretty much everything that went on that entire week. And we came to an agreement that you'd sell for $8, you'd get 4, we'd get 4, and then to where it'd be 10. We split that the same. There's a mini clip, Mr. Khan tells me, on the website, and with the order form for that, too. So it's pretty much it.
Was there not a winter homecoming this year?
There is. It's in February.
Oh, it's in February. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I should answer that.
Okay.
Okay.
I was wondering.
Yeah.
I didn't know if it ever happened.
No.
Okay.
Are we ready? Ready, sir?
Great. And this is, Barb's going to give an update on the budget process we're going through. One of the different problems, right, at this time, is we're really in between times because we're awaiting the governor's executive budget proposal. And once we receive that executive budget proposal, we'll have a more firm revenue figure to use for state aid purposes that will help generate the budget process moving forward. So Barb, if you would.
I'm going to apologize because I didn't have the slide keynotes, which are at my office. Sorry about that. But this is short, so if you can run it down. We're on turn now.
They're back by the time I turn to get that.
That's what I was thinking. Got my finger all shoes on on turn, I'm just. But what I can do is email out to you, and of course, it's going to be on the website because Michelle is going to be requesting it anyway. So we just have a little update tonight. We wanted to talk a little bit about some of the strategies that we've presented at previous meetings that we're already in the course of implementation. It's not to say that any of it's done deal or completed, but we're working on that. It's already underway. One of the things, of course, is the retirement incentive, which you'll see on the agenda this evening. The retirement incentive for your vote tonight is between the district and the Hamburg Teachers Association. I put a potential savings on there of 1.25 million, however, that is not a hard number. It is, of course, dependent upon the actual number of individuals who take advantage of the incentive and their status. Everybody's a little bit different. Their salary, of course, is a little bit different depending upon if they're a family or single. But this, it's a ballpark number, and it's what we're shooting for in order to be successful with the incentive. Another strategy that's underway is we are in the process of applying for competitive grants. We're calling it a strategy for our budget development. We, of course, don't count on necessarily being funded. That would be a little short-sighted. But we're always hopeful. We are looking at any competitive grants that are available that we qualify for. They're all very difficult to reach, but of course, we are going to certainly get there and see what comes of that.